So it being 6:01, is there a motion to open the meeting?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 It's unanimous?
Sorry, I was in the wrong meeting.
That's okay. Is there a motion to go? Hold on, sorry, can't read the other computer. Is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss a contractual matter?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for the public. If anyone's watching, we're going to go into executive session after which we will come back out at 6:30 for our public meeting.
So we're gonna leave this and go into the other one, right?
We'll leave this and go into the other one, yep.
Thank you, Brian.
Everybody in that other one.
Bye.
Good evening, Jeff. Good evening, everybody. We, um, we are back. Apologize for being nine minutes late of the meeting. Um, at this point, I would ask everyone to join me for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Great, thank you. Okay. Moving on to, uh, section four of tonight's agenda, which is public input number one. If there's anybody here from the public that would like to, uh, ask a question, raise an issue, or make a statement, now would be the time to do it. You will have three minutes. Just state your name, not your address. Um, and if you are here for discussion of an item on the agenda, I would ask that you hold your comments or questions until we get to that section of the agenda. And with that, uh, you could raise your hand or put a question into the chat room.
We have one person who has raised her hand to speak.
Okay.
Actually two. So we're gonna go with Isabel Kaplan first.
Okay.
Um, hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please just state your name.
Um, I'm Isabel Kaplan and I'm a ninth student. Um, I think high school students should have the ability to eat outside. Students are supposed to be able to go outside for the second half of lunch, no matter the weather. But often due to inclement weather and lack of enthusiasm, monitors do not allow students outside. Middle school students were given the opportunity to eat lunch outside, and I think that students, high school students should have this option too. The most risky time of the day for COVID transmissions for teachers and students is lunch, when both monitors and students are unmasked inside. Adding to that fact, students are talking and in many unsafe situations, yelling, singing, walking around the room unmasked and sharing food. Eating outside for the entire period would lower the risk of COVID transmission if there were a case in class. Many students might not opt for this option if it is necessary to commit to all days or no days. I think students have the ability to be outside anytime they feel they should take the safer option. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming this evening, Isabel. Appreciate it. Um, Mr. Nichols. You're muted.
I can speak to it because it's Pearson High School. So Isabel, we are working on it. Um, we did lunch monitors. We have, we call them swing lunch monitors for the fifth period and sixth grade, sixth period lunch, which are middle school lunches. But we can add a lunch monitor to the high school lunch for a swing period because they're not cohorted in the high school. And that means those students who want to eat outside can be outside with that outdoor lunch monitor. Just give me a week and I'll have it in place.
Awesome.
Sounds great. Thank you, Ms. Carrero. Um, any questions from the board for Ms. Carrero or any, anything else that anyone would like to add? Okay, so you can hear no one. Uh, Mr. Fisher, the next hand raised, please.
Uh, I believe it's Kevin Deller.
Okay.
Hold on one second, Kevin. I'm trying to unmute you. There we go. Go ahead, Kevin. Kevin, you seem to be muted.
See, how about now?
Now we can hear you.
There we go. Hi, hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Kevin Deller. I think a lot of you know me. I, uh, wanted to start off by thanking you for everything that you've done during these incredibly challenging times. Very difficult decisions and often no clear cut answer as to what is the right answer, but wanted to thank you for that. Brian, you had mentioned, um, pulling off on questions. I see, you know, Mash Park on the agenda, but I had a question regarding athletic fields. Is that, should we tie that into Mash Park and wait, or would you like me to ask now?
You can, uh, ask now if it's about athletic field, sure.
Okay, it was a question that I submitted, uh, last meeting. Uh, and as, you know, we're trying to create additional improved playing fields for our students. Uh, I, I feel we should address the turf grass possibilities behind Pearson. When this topic was last debated a few years ago, legitimate concerns about the health issues that could be caused by the rubber based turf. Artificial turf has come a long way in regards to safety. The turf that we installed in the new batting cage in the park, uh, was thatch based. And I'd like to, uh, you know, request perhaps that we could revisit, uh, that, the pros and cons regarding, uh, the new turf. And perhaps borrow some of the homework from our neighboring schools, East Hampton, Southampton, and Southold, that are already using turf fields. I'm a natural grass guy by nature, but I just feel like where we are and the ability to get as much use out of the space behind the school, um, I feel at the very least, we should revisit, uh, the turf grass situation as perhaps a multi, multi-field, um, multi-purpose field.
Okay.
And, and the questions that we asked, uh, last meeting via email, will those be addressed in the, if they were Mash Park related in that session?
Yes, I would, I would encourage you to, to ask them or bring them up soon as we open up that section so we can just for consistency and responses.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other hands raised? Mr. Fisher?
Uh, yes, we have Brent. Uh, we did. My hand went down. I'm sorry. Hold on one second. Brent Green. Go ahead, Brent.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. My question was also a follow-up because I know you're going to be addressing the Mash Park contract, but I think the usage of the field behind the high school directly correlates to the contract. Because I feel like at this point, we don't have, um, the Mash Park doesn't really have enough fields to address the needs of our student body. And I'm very concerned that our student athletes, especially baseball and softball, don't really have the facilities, in my opinion, to compete with other communities and the facilities that they have. It seems to me since I've been in this community that that field hasn't really been able to be utilized to its potential because the grass was rooting, the grass was developing, the field was trying to move into a position that it could be used for high school or middle school use, and it hasn't really materialized at this point. So I think if we are looking at trying to get a multiple purpose field so that we can have, you know, middle school baseball and have, um, middle school softball, we should really address if that field is going to meet our needs for the next couple of seasons. And if we don't, then again, to Kevin Deller's point, we should move forward and look at other options. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. We will, we will consider. Appreciate you coming to the meeting. Mr. Fisher, any other hands?
Yes, uh, we have Greg Scavoni. Hold on one second, Greg. Go ahead.
Yeah, do you hear me?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, great. Hey, I'm actually, I know the, uh, Mash Park was on the agenda tonight. So I thought I would just, uh, you know, give my input, uh, public input one, just, uh, so when you guys discuss, you'll, you know, get a sense of the park board's thoughts. And also if any questions arise, if, if this helps answer them, or if.
Greg, let me just pause you there for one second.
What's that?
This is Brian. Let me just hold you there for one second. Let's just move on to section five, which is the Mash Park discussion for the community and the board. So I just, for consistency, I'm not gonna hold this against you. If you can then start now. So now we're in section 5.1 of the agenda, which is the, the Mash, Mash Park discussion. And I apologize for cutting you off, Greg. I just want to keep it all on the same.
No problem.
So go ahead. You can start over. Uh, we'll give you your time back because I cut you off and.
Okay. Greg Scavoni, I'm the president of the, uh, park board. Um, I just, like I said, I knew the, uh, park board was going to be on the agenda tonight with the, uh, contract expiring on the, uh, end of June. So I just wanted to say a few words about, uh, the park, um, where we're at. And also, this would help you guys if any questions arise during the discussion, or if you put together a list of questions, of course, we'd be more than happy to answer it. Just a brief background and some, uh, ideas about the fields and where we're at. You know, as most of you know, the park, it's a private, uh, not-for-profit entity. We're not funded by any taxpayers' dollars. Um, we do work very closely with the school because of the spirit of the organizational charter that was set forth by Mrs. Page. And, you know, the contract between the school and the park, it's basically for the exclusive use of the fields, which benefits the school's athletic endeavors and all the students. The contract, it's not a pay-as-you-play contract. So, you know, the school port, sports in connection with the obligation to the New York State and the edu- educational laws, you know, you must have adequate fields and other areas for their teams. And our agreement reserved certain areas for the park for a certain times period to be used solely by the school. You know, the fields need to be maintained whether or not the school makes the decision to use them or not. So at the park, you know, we work hard to make sure there are never any other entities or people using or occupying the fields, um, especially for student events. And with respect to the past year, there was always the hope that the COVID virus situation would be resolved in some fashion that would allow and permit school sports to continue and resume. I think everyone knows where we also were subject to the laws and decisions of the county of Suffolk and the state of New York. So once sports were, were permitted to resume, Pearson could take advantage of fields, knowing that you would be our top priority and you would have fully functioning fields, thanks to Jeff and Tony, who basically are the only two who work on the fields. With that being said, in the upcoming months, from the days from March, March 9th to May 7th, the park will host 31 school sporting events. Um, there's gonna be actually three days in that stretch where there will be three different events at the same time happening. There will also be three days, which will have two different events happening at the same time. So this schedule and those events I just discussed, that doesn't even take into account the baseball or softball seasons, which will happen after those seasons start. So, you know, yeah, believe me, when I say Jeff and Tony, they'll be working as hard as ever to keep the fields playable for everybody and in the top standards that we're all used to. And I just wanted to say, you know, also that Park does remain friendly partners with the school and we are sensitive to the school's needs. Thanks.
So much, Greg. Appreciate you coming out this evening. Is there anyone from the board or are there any, first, uh, let's take the, the public first since they've waited a little bit. Uh, Mr. Fisher, are there any hands raised or questions in the chat box?
I did not see any more hands raised and I didn't see anything in the chat, but I'm checking now.
Anyone who has attended the meeting this evening to remind you to discuss Mash Park?
There is one more hand that just went up, Brian. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Kevin Martin?
Sure.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Yes, I can hear you.
We can.
Yes, I have a question for Eric. Is he there?
Yep, you have to address him to the, to the board, Kevin, and we can, and filter that down.
Okay, my question is for Eric. Um, I'm curious as to how our school feels compared to the other schools in the area. You know, we behind, are we even, are we ahead? How, how do we compare?
Mr. Nichols, is Mr. Bramoff available, or would you like to field that?
He'll be on the call. Let me take a look.
I'm here, Mr. Nichols. Um, would, uh, Kevin, uh, it's an interesting question. Uh, I, I I don't really know how to answer that because if you're asking for my personal opinion, or if you're asking for a, um, a school district data-driven answer, I don't, I don't really know.
No, I'm not as, I'm asking for an honest opinion. I'm not asking for a political one.
I, I don't, I don't feel.
Oh, Mr. Bramoff, if, if you know, it's not, you know.
Excuse me? I'm sorry, I'm having trouble. Um, I'm at, I'm at the volleyball practice. Um, could, could you restate the question, Kevin?
Uh, I'd like to know how our fields at Pearson compare to the neighboring schools.
In my personal opinion, I do believe they are subpar.
Subpar. Thank you.
Eric, uh, would you want to expand upon that? Is it due to the grass versus the turf component? Or is it, uh, simply, uh, a subpar because of the maintenance? I mean, I, I, I think the grass usually looks pretty good, but is the turf component, the artificial turf, a significant element of that, um, assessment?
Yeah, the lack of a turf, uh, field as a resource is a significant component. When it comes to the lack of that field, I mean, for right now, we can't schedule any home field hockey games because I don't see that grass being playable for in, until we get a nice warm spell where the grass can start growing. The baseball field, uh, you know, it needs major work. It needs major work. The other thing is we only have one baseball field for the district and that, that's not the park's fault. That's not, that's not the school's fault. It's just, we only have one resource and it gets a lot of use. And you know, I, most other schools, like I'll take Southold, for example, uh, they've had substantial upgrades to their facilities. East Rockaway, substantial upgrades to their facilities. Uh, we are gonna be one of the only schools, uh, and I don't have exact data on this, that is, uh, not gonna have a turf field at, at their disposal. Again, again, Kevin, uh, this is a personal opinion of mine and, uh, I do think that the Mash Park does a phenomenal job with what they have to work. And I also think the groundskeepers here at the school do a wonderful job.
Thank you, Eric. Mr. Fisher, are there other hands raised or questions out there?
Yes, there are. We now have, uh, Beth Gregor.
Yep.
Go ahead, Beth.
Can't hear you, Beth.
She muted?
We're not hearing you, Beth.
Can you hear me there?
Yep, we can hear you now.
It's, uh, Ben Gregor. How are you guys tonight?
Hey, Ben, how are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you. Um, the, what I'd like to discuss is before the contract is, uh, negotiated next time, I'd like to see some, uh, public input. I don't know, uh, there, there was some things in this past contract that I feel weren't, uh, you know, they, they didn't live up to their obligation that I'd like, I think, uh, a little bit more input on both the schools and, and the, the parks and would, would, uh, benefit the, uh, the kids of the, of the community a little bit more. I don't know, uh, if you guys have an open discussion would like, uh, expect out of the park or?
We, we would, we would like to hear all that, Ben. That wa- that was the first purpose of us having this scheduled discussion tonight so we can get input from the, from the public. So if you, if you have that information, we would be happy to receive that now, or.
Yeah, um, I, I believe there was dugouts that were supposed to be upgraded or, or at least maintained. None of that's been done. Um, we talked about the, the men's softball field, which we call the lighted field, um, expanding the size to increase usage for seventh and eighth grade boys, JV boys. We, we proposed, I believe it was last January, to do it free of charge and, uh, they said it, well, the time wasn't right. Meanwhile, if you looked in the contract, that was, was, um, brought up, that the, uh, the park would do it. And we're just wondering when the right, right time would be, seeing how it could be done now and we'd be able to use it, weather permitting, obviously, but, uh, it's, it's just another thing that's, that's gone to the wayside. And, and time, time is, you know, running away. So, um, these are just some of the current, excuse me, concerns that we, uh, we want to bring up before we go ahead and, uh, ink another contract with the park. I mean, it, it's, it's not even the money, money side of things as much as it is, uh, get, getting what you pay for. And if, if increasing the budget to, to get more is, is what it takes, you know, I, I'm not gonna hold, like I said, the, the park responsible or the school responsible. I think there was a lack of interest between the two parties and it just should be addressed before we, uh, we move forward. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Ben. Mr. Fisher?
Yep, we have a few others now at this point. Um, we have Kevin Martin.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Kevin. If you can just be sure to ask all your questions, we want to.
Yeah, real quick, I just want to recommend that I think the school board should go up to the park and do a walk around there to see what they're actually dealing with.
Great, thank you.
Jeff, can I, can I interject on that? Mr. Nichols?
Mr. DeSessa.
Mr. DeSess- Mr. DeSessa, um, I do work pretty closely with, uh, with Tony, Jeff and, uh, Greg, obviously being the president of the park board. Uh, I'm actually scheduled to take a walk around for the cross-country course this, this week. You know, I re- I regularly work with the park staff to do a, you know, a walk around to see what's going on down there.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay, so, uh, we have Brent Green.
Yep.
Hey, guys. Thanks again. So now that we're talking about the relationship with the backfield and the, and the renegotiation of the board, the, the park, you know, last season, we just didn't have baseball fields for our, for our middle school. They practice at Ross. They practice in a backfield. I don't think we currently have a field that's gonna be designated for our, for our athletes to play on. I was one of the individuals that did present to Mash Park to improve the softball's field so that we can have a multi-purpose field that would allow not only softball for women that, that are on girls through high school as well as outside private leagues like the adult softball league. But I propose to increase the infield to the point that we can have base pass that would allow our, um, middle school and even JV kids the ability to practice as well as possibly eventually having home games. When we start renegotiating the contract, I think it's very imperative that we realize that we currently don't have fields that allow our athletes to compete. We just don't have the fields. So if Mash Park does not have that ability, I think it should be very transparent with the school board to let us know what we can and can't expect from Mash Park. And then because of that, then we would have to make adjustments. We would have to start making an additional plan so that our athletes can compete with other schools and have a fair opportunity to compete on a level playing field. So that is something that Mash Park currently can't provide for us because, you know, land is at a premium here. We all know that. We have one baseball field. There's a priority of using that baseball field. It starts off with varsity and then you have the ability for junior varsity to possibly use the field. And then you have middle school. So because we have limited resources, the boys that are in middle school just don't have the opportunity even seeing that baseball field until they're at a visiting team. We're gonna have to decide if we're gonna start doing away games, if we're gonna basically start only having away playing games for our athletes, or if we're gonna put ourselves in a position that we can start having home games. And when we're having home games, we obviously want to have the facilities that will represent our community. And that's what I think we all want to achieve at this point, is collectively try to find ways of improving our fields and allowing our athletes to have the ability to compete with other schools that are in our local areas. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Brent. Mr. Fisher?
Uh, we have Kevin again. Hold on one second. Uh, Kevin Deller, go ahead. Kevin Deller, go ahead.
Can you hear me yet?
Yep.
We can.
So along the lines of what, what Ben Gregor was speaking about, about the, uh, in the last contract where we had, uh, signed the contract with the list, and there's a list of recommendations from 2018, 2021 that the school made to the, uh, the Board of Ed, made to the park. So my question to that is, what, what is the follow-up and protocol regarding those recommendations? What is the role of the, the Board of Ed Park liaison? Are they, are they at every meeting? Do they report back to the Board of Ed? Do they follow up with these particular items? Or do we wait until the contract is over to see what was done and what wasn't done? I know, Eric, you said you walked around, but I, I also wanted to ask the Board of Ed as to what is, is that role, uh, of, of the Board of Ed Park liaison regarding specifically the recommendations that were made in the contract. And with most of those, any, any improvements that are to be made are coming out of the school reserve fund on top of, uh, the agreed-upon monthly, um, payment that's being made. So again, it's more, my question is, guess, is more directed towards protocol and process after the contract has been signed, as far as following up on, on what was agreed upon and requested.
So we, we do have, uh, protocol and process for that. We do have a liaison that does attend meetings, does regularly report back to the board and the school. The athletic director does update us, Mr. Bramoff, as well as to conditions. Uh, and we do match up and are in the process of that review now, matching up obligations in the contract, to ensure that they have been complied with.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, um, Brian, we do not have any others with their hand raised. There is one comment. Would you like to read it? Would you like me to read it?
Sure, I can read it. It's so small on this computer today. It says, "The grass is also pretty dangerous. I slipped a number of times today, as did many of my teammates on the field hockey team. There certainly is a disadvantage being one of the only schools without turf." I think it was more of a statement than a question. Thank you, Madison. Okay, any board questions, board discussion, or board, board thoughts, uh, at this point with respect to Mash Park?
I have some thoughts, Brian.
Yeah, please, Alex.
So, uh, you know, I think we heard from some people tonight and for some reason heard from a lot of people at the last meeting, but there's definitely a perception in the community that the district has been getting a raw deal with the Mash Park contract and that we've been giving the park a lot of money and it's hard to see what we're getting in return. I, I've been in the fields. My kids play Little League. They're, um, they don't compare well to, to fields in, in other places. You got a bathroom that's sort of state prison level, you know, in terms of cleanliness. And so I think as we head into another contract, that is, you know, like all contracts, it's something that's gonna happen, you know, in private. I think though, it, it very much ought to be a public discussion as to sort of what, what happened to the money. You know, it's public money. It's over $200,000 a year. And I think it, it's important to get an accounting of what happened with that money for the last three years, what the, what the parks books look like. And then I think we also need to look at whether this is in the school district's best interest and whether we'd be better off playing in somewhere in East Hampton or Southampton, what, what, what that would cost and what, because there are other fields, that, what those would look like.
Thanks, Alex. Um, and, and I, I did see a hand raised and once we get through the board, we'll go back to the hands.
I just wanted to, if it's okay.
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, I just think that, so a while ago, we got a bunch of emails from some of the people that spoke today. And I think today, the so a while ago, we got a bunch of emails from some of the people that spoke today, and I think today, the, I think what you guys said today was a lot more clear to me than the emails we got a few weeks ago in terms of kind of just like concrete, like list of things you're looking to see dugout middle school fields, you know, having that second fi- field be expanded, just kind of it would be great to get a laundry list. It sounds, it seems to me like you guys are a pretty organized group of people. If you have a collective laundry list of things you're looking to see, it would be great for us to just kind of have that list so that our board liaison, if the board wants to go that way, could then just bring that list to Mash Park and we can find out kind of what it would take to get all those things accomplished.
Um, I I would add that I I think getting that from our athletic director would be helpful, too. We've heard from several people in the community that middle school, a middle school team here or there that there's no facility or access on a regular basis at the park. I think getting that from our athletic director just holistically, like here's what we can field and here's what we can't field. And again, we, if the park was bigger, we probably could field more, right? But at least getting that um landscape from the athletic director, too, I think would be helpful. And how we, and 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 updated, like, how do we address that? So if we don't have enough fields currently at Mash Park, how, where are other teams playing, or are our student athletes missing opportunities because we just because we haven't developed a plan that includes other options?
I just wanted to add also, like, you know, I agree with Alex. I agree with Jordana and Chris what they said. At the same time, you know, whatever recommendations we get, we just need to make sure it's just not gonna be a wish list that is gonna be brushed off like in the future, and it's kind of tied into like, you know, our agreement with the park. So whatever, like, we request, at least we get some tangible results from it.
Thank you, Yorgos. Any other board members? Mr. Fisher, if you would unmute Mr. Shavoni.
Hi, Greg.
Hey, um, I just, so the the current contract which expires.
Oops, hold on a second, sorry, but I agree. Greg, go ahead.
You hear me?
We get, if you could start over, Greg, sorry, we lost.
Alright, so the their current contract, which expires, it does have a list of items to be completed, if they could be completed, and basically there are sections marked yes, no, maybe. The yes, no, maybe is, yes, the park can do it, no, the park can't, maybe they can't. In terms of scalping that backfield, that was listed as a maybe. Now, I think we're also muddling the waters with what Little League presented to do as compared to what the contract between the school and park is. So we have to separate those, number one, because they're two different topics. The Little League can come to us, which they do, and talk about improvements or betterments, but that doesn't affect the school contract we have in place. So we we can't muddle that as one entity trying to do the same thing, number one. Number two, um in terms of land, yes, you're right, we we can't make more land. We have the fields we have, and the park does the best to maintain them, to make them playable. And I understand, yeah, it's it's the only field in Sag Harbor that's a regulation size for, you know, middle school and up, and right now there isn't another field. So, but I just want to point out that, one, we do have the list, and two, in terms of that back softball field, which girls use for softball, I don't know, you know, how infecting scalping that and making, you know, you're gonna then have, which is the big issue on the baseball field is always the lips on the infield edge. You're gonna have a lip in between your infield and outfield that a base hit's gonna pop up. So, you know, the park's gonna catch hell for that, too. It's it's a no-win situation if you ask me.
No, thank you. Thank you, Greg. And 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 like everyone said, we're, no one, oh, I'm sorry, Sandy.
Yeah, I just want to say that um I do believe that Greg is right when he talks about what um the Little League wants and needs are versus what the high school needs are. But reskining a field for a girl's softball and being able to accommodate boys and girls on the field is, does affect the high school facility if we are shipping our kids to the Ross School to use fields. And if there's a way that they can make a field become a field for two different groups, then that is something that is not a a want, but a need. And I have to agree with Alex. I mean, the restrooms, uh porta potties, you know, that is us as a district. It's not just that. So I do think that the waters did, could get a little muddied here, but at the end of the day, um, it was a park for the children of Sag Harbor, and I think people are just trying to state um what they want for their kids. And I think if we all just took a breath and stepped back, we could work together and make this happen.
Thank you, Sandy. I I agree with that, and I think that's why I'm glad we're having the conversation so that the public is able to provide us input. We can hear from the park. And thank you for joining us tonight, Mr. Shavoni, and we will continue this discussion, you know, as we work, you know, between now and the expiration of the contract. Um, anything else from the board? Okay, I'd like to thank everybody, and we will be moving on to uh section six of our agenda, which is the superintendent's report. Uh, Mr. Nichols.
Thanks, Brian. I have uh three things uh that are on the agenda, and then I'll touch on a fourth. Uh, the first is the school calendar update. So typically around this time of the year, we approve a calendar for the coming year. In this case, it would be the 21, 22 school year. But prior to doing that, we had convened a uh school calendar committee uh charged with looking at a couple of holidays. Most notably, Juneteenth, Columbus Day, and Indigenous Peoples' Day. Uh, the committee met several times over the course uh of the current year, and it was comprised of students, uh teachers, uh parents, and administrators. And uh what I'm, what I'd like to do is to summarize essentially the the three uh different days and and my recommendation as a member of the committee, and I'll I'll try to summarize the committee's thoughts as well. Uh, but I want to preface that my recommendation doesn't necessarily represent all of the committee members' views. First, uh with Juneteenth, uh that holiday has basically been taken out of our hands uh because New York State has classified it as a legal uh state holiday and has stated that students cannot be in session uh on June 19th. So that uh language uh will, uh in fact, be incorporated into the proposed calendar that will uh be put before the board at the next meeting. The second um issue, which is a little more complicated, a lot more complicated from my perspective, is the issue of Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day. And at past board meetings, uh a summary has been provided that basically, and not all of us, but basically the majority of students uh favored doing away with Columbus Day. Uh, and they had thoughtfully articulated reasons to justify their recommendation, and the majority of adults, not all of them, uh recommended that we keep Columbus Day uh and provided reasons from their perspective uh that that recommendation was justified. And we went back and forth on it, and my recommendation uh to the Board of Education at this time is to keep Columbus Day, uh keep it where it is, and establish a separate Indigenous Peoples' Day on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Uh, and most importantly, with regard to all three holidays, uh use it as an opportunity for the school to educate uh the students under our charge about the different perspectives and the different views with regard to each of those holidays. So for instance, with Juneteenth embedded into the curriculum to talk about the Emancipation Proclamation uh and the why uh associated with why people in Texas were basically delayed two years from earning the rights associated with the pro- proclamation. And with regard to Columbus Day, um, and I don't think it's confined to Columbus Day, but because I think it's an issue that our nation is wrestling with with monuments and and our history is maybe talk about uh the significant pieces that or accomplishments that uh Columbus um was responsible for while at the same time uh educating people about some of the things he were and he was involved in at that time, which perhaps were not looked at the same way they are today, that today we look at in a very negative light. Uh, in other words, teach uh about the history. I just want to say the downside of of doing that, and I'm cognizant of it, is that you potentially send a message to some that in not doing away with the holiday, you're devaluing their views, and I I don't want to convey that. I just believe that um educating, educating people about a time and a person and a holiday is probably our most valuable approach, and I think you can, you can apply it not only to Columbus, but to George Washington, to Thomas Jefferson, to different pieces in our history. So anyway, that tho- those are my recommendations with regard to the three holidays. I'm happy to answer uh any questions or, of course, entertain uh different perspectives or viewpoints at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Opening it up to the board for questions or stick comments for Mr. Nichols.
Yeah, um, I haven't, unless anyone else wants to go first, I.
Sure.
Okay, um, so as I think Brian and and Jeff know, um, I have a slightly different uh thought on this. Um, so I I apologize what I'm gonna say is a little longer than I wanted to, but I want, I I didn't want to forget anything, so I wrote it down, so just bear with me for a sec. Um, but first, I just want to thank the rest of the board for insisting that we take our time to form a calendar committee um and think that, think this through really carefully. Uh, I think you guys know, I was, I was ready to move back in August, so um I I do think this has been incredibly valuable experience. I I also want to thank all of the members of the calendar committee for the time they took to engage in thoughtful and respectful debate throughout this experience. It really showed me that in this day and age where everything seems to be so polarizing, it's still possible to respectfully disagree here in Sag Harbor and remain completely civil and cordial. Um, and I was also really impressed by the students on the calendar committee for being really aware of bias and recognizing it when it arose during our conversations. Um, it shows me that our teachers are doing an amazing job of cultivating the next generation of critical thinkers, and it made me so incredibly excited to live here and be raising my kids here. Um, so I I learned a lot. Um, I think we can all agree that Christopher Columbus was indeed one of the most influential explorers of his time. He found the ver- the first viable sailing routes from Europe to the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. His explorations led to what scholars refer to as a Colombian exchange of food, animals, and technology. I also learned through the calendar committee that Christopher Columbus and his crew are in part credited with bringing the Spanish language with them, providing the beginnings of a common unifying language to the region. Um, there are a lot of other alleged facts about Christopher Columbus that are negative relating to slavery, mistreatment, bringing diseases, and the Board of Ed has received numerous emails from members of the Sons of Columbus and other individuals debating these allegations, for example. Although Christopher Columbus was accused of such horrendous atrocities that King Ferdinand imprisoned him, um, he was actually pardoned of those crimes, uh but he was still stripped of his titles. Also, focusing on these types of negative attributes doesn't necessarily negate someone's legacy because times were different, and what is acceptable now shouldn't necessarily be used as a measure of person's character centuries ago. Um, as Jeff rightly stated, very early on, early on in this process, if we go down that rabbit hole, a lot of other celebrated figures of American history come into question. With all that in mind, there are two facts that don't seem to be up for debate that are determinative in my mind. The first is that Christopher Columbus never set set foot in North America. And I think it's worth emphasizing again, he never set foot in the continental United States of America. The second fact is that he also didn't discover the Americas at all. Indigenous peoples already lived here. So why are we celebrating him as if he did? Um, so my understanding is that what we are trying to achieve by celebrating him is that we celebrate Columbus Day because he's a figure of Italian-American heritage, and Columbus Day was created at a time in history when Italian-Americans faced great persecution, and that's really important. I don't think it's given enough weight in the conversation. We celebrate Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday so that we can remember the legacy of a man who tried to help African Americans overcome persecution. So why not also celebrate and learn about the Italian-American experience? Celebrating many cultures that make this country special is a great thing. And if we, as a community, feel that it's important to take a day off to recognize a particular culture's struggles or history, I'm completely supportive of that. Um, if the goal, however, is to celebrate Columbus Day because he discovered America, it it's just not true. And that part of his legacy is simply false, and when we talk about the discovery of the United States of America, I think it's equally important that we discuss that indigenous peoples were already here and that Native Americans are facing persecution and adversity as a direct result of the colonialist actions of the empires of Western Europe, just like those empires who funded Columbus's explorations. Um, as a result, I believe that Columbus Day needs maybe not an asterisk, because an asterisk is such a negative connotation, but we should look at it as a two-sided coin, where Indigenous Peoples' Day is simply the other side of that coin. I understand that the reasons to keep Columbus Day, and it's important to remember that the past and not erase history. I also appreciate that Mr. Nichols is recommending that we create a separate day to observe the cultures. And that's definitely progress in my mind. Um, I also have to confess that the idea to have two separate days, one for Columbus Day and one for Indigenous Peoples' Day, was something I had suggested during the first calendar committee meeting. At the time, I was trying to find a middle ground between the two debating groups in hopes to make everyone happy. Um, but upon further reflection, it just doesn't go quite far enough in my mind, because it doesn't create that, you know, other side of the coin or the asterisk that seems warranted and whisper conversations about, you know, Indigenous Peoples' Day and the problematic aspects of colonialism. Um, so, you know, in conclusion, it it's been said that, you know, the true measure of any society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable members. Those vulnerable members are our minorities in the situation, the underrepresented Native American population. But in addition, another underrepresented population here is our student population. They don't seem to really get a vote here, even though our students were supportive of going even further and eliminating Columbus Day entirely. The Student Council survey results showed that a slight majority of students favored eliminating Columbus Day and replacing it with Indigenous Peoples' Day. Since it was only a slight majority, and since only about 10% of the student population participated, it's not statistically significant and also not necessarily indicative of the full student body. But it's enough to make it clear that there is indeed support amongst some of the student body. Sorry, body for a change in this direction. You know, the calendar committee had students on it who, although they weren't specifically chosen to represent a wide range of viewpoints, were also overwhelmingly in support of making the change. Um, so we, as a board, asked for the students' thoughts on this issue specifically. We received their opinions and shouldn't dismiss them um or discount them. As a result, even if I'm the only board member doing so, I will represent them on this issue and believe our calendar should be changed so that, at the very least, the day is renamed to Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, that way, we're making it clear that Columbus's legacy, while impressive, is also complicated. That's all. Thank you.
Other board members?
Um, I want to jump in. Um, I was on the committee, and I appreciate the opportunity to to be part of the conversation, and I would uh I would confirm um Jordana's comment about how I thought that the conversation was constructive and cordial, and I was particularly impressed with the students because it's difficult when most of the people on the on the call are adults and their teachers, administrators, and they spoke up, and I felt like they spoke from their heart. Um, and they shared some personal feelings about how this impacts them and how this makes them feel as individuals, as students, and as members of our community. So it was, some of what we heard was quite impassioned, and I was really impressed by their willingness to share. Personally, um, you know, I uh I am not in favor of keeping Columbus Day. Uh, it doesn't mean I'm, I I'm not in favor of honoring the heritage of Italians and their contribution to our history. I just don't know if he's the Italian to honor per se. Based on, I, when I grew up, I was, you know, back in the Dark Ages, we were taught that he- Based on, when I grew up, I was, you know, back in the Dark Ages, we were taught that he like, you know, he discovered America, which as we now know is not really true. So just as an individual on the board and someone who participated in the committee, I, I was in favor of, just for the record, of not continuing with Columbus Day, of having Indigenous People's Day. And if we, if, if the committee and community felt it was important to continue to have a specific day honoring Italian heritage and contribution to have it not be Columbus.
Thank you, Bruce. Any other board members?
I'll go next. I was also a member of the committee. And again, you know, I think it was a very constructive discussion. I was in favor of keeping Columbus Day and still am. And you know, for me, I wasn't born here in this country. I became a citizen much later, but for me, Columbus always was like a significant historical figure. And I didn't see his celebration as part of the Italian heritage, but mostly like, you know, for what he achieved back then. And you know, throughout this whole discussion, and you know, based on Jeff's recommendation, this country, and I think, you know, what we're trying to achieve here is being inclusive and not exclusive. So for me, like, you know, even though I was like proponent of like keeping Columbus Day the way it was, you know, it opened my mind and I understand like, you know, why we need to respect everyone and add every celebration here that, you know, to reflect, you know, you know, the people in this country. So, so, so for me, rewriting history and, you know, going certain way, it's like excluding, you know, a lot of like other people from this community. And, you know, here as part of the board, it's we represent the school, but we also represent the community. And I think that big voice within the community wants this Columbus Day to stay as part of the school calendar. So for me, I mean, I would support Jeff's recommendation, the way he did it, to keep both days.
Thank you, Yorgos. Other board members?
I support Jeff's recommendation.
Thank you, Alex.
I am as well support Jeffrey's recommendation. I think that having a separate Ingenere's, Ingenere's Day and keeping Columbus Day the way it is.
I'm also in agreement with Jeff and I understand, and I respect Jordana's voice for representing the students along with Chris's. But I also have to say that I did count the emails and we received 42 emails in the last month and a half from people who supported Clay being Columbus Day. So I'm not really sure that the surveys that were shown were an accurate accounting of our entire community. So I think what Jeff has done has kind of, as Jordana said, we've all going to agree to disagree, but we have unity in what was decided. So thank you to the committee and thank you to Jeff for your recommendation.
Thank you, Sandy. And I think that the committee did a great job. I know it took a lot of work. We appreciated the feedback. The students that came and spoke before us at the last meeting when this was under consideration. So I think everybody learned a lot, in my opinion, on this in terms of different perceptions. And I think the route of being more inclusive and not inclusive or exclusive is, in my opinion, a favorable way to move forward. So I would be supporting Jeff's recommendation to the board as adding that day in light of the state not having acknowledged that I think we can as a, as a school district and as a community to work toward becoming more inclusive of everyone. So I will be supporting Jeff's recommendation.
Can I ask a question, Jeff? Is there been any, since the last time we talked about this, has there been any more information that we've been able to gather about what other East End districts are doing about Columbus Day, if anything?
Well, I've not just confined my search to East End districts. I know that Southampton has sort of led the way in doing away with Columbus Day. But I've looked at what higher education has done, mostly colleges and universities. And they have sort of done away with Columbus Day and those decisions were made years ago. New York versus the rest of the country sort of lags in, I guess, the extent to which they've moved away from Columbus Day. Some people say it's because we have a pretty large Italian-American population. But I don't really want to speculate about that. I will say that, you know, where I started, and I'm not answering your question, Chris, but when I started my summary, what I left out is that this is, well, I said it was a complicated issue with different perspectives, but even amongst the administrative team, there's really not solidarity or unity in how we see this issue. So this is the kind of issue that, you know, if you poll 100 people, you're going to get perhaps an even split. So I think that's sort of where we're at.
Yeah, it was interesting, the emails that the district got in support of it, many, many, many of them. I don't know if it was the majority, but it felt like the majority were from people who didn't live in the district who were part of an American Italian organization in Brooklyn or the Bronx, or we got some from the Midwest, or it was very, a very well organized email campaign. And, you know, it's always good to get email regardless of whether someone's in the district or not. But, but I don't feel like we have a good pulse on what the majority of the district wants. So I would assume that whatever we decide tonight or when we vote on the calendar, it may still be fluid and in discussion next year.
That makes sense to me.
And to clarify for the public watching, it is not on for revote this evening, was on for discussion to be scheduled at our next meeting.
I have had an emergency. I'm going to have to leave for a little bit and hope to come back. Everything's fine. I just wanted, so people just didn't see me and think it. So I apologize for interrupting.
Thank you, Sandy.
Hopefully I'll be back. Thank you.
Brian, do you want me to move on to the next topic on the superintendent's report?
Yes, please, barring any other questions or comments from the board. Please move on, Jeff.
So the next topic I want to talk about is interscholastic sports. The next season begins or began today, March 1st. And I made a recommendation to the board last week that we proceed with all sports for the next season, the season that began March 1st. And in making that decision, I considered, or making that recommendation rather, I considered a couple of factors. Number one, the local conditions with regard to the test positive rate. And thankfully, the test positive rate over the last few weeks has decreased. I also considered the types of sports that were offered during this current season and whether or not they took place indoors or outdoors, whether or not masks could be worn. And an analysis of the extent to which people are in close proximity to each other and exhaling forcefully within a close distance. And the determination at the end of the day was that we again offer all sports. There are two high-risk sports that were included in that group. One was football, which is a sport we, we, we play with East Hampton. It's a shared sport and a critical factor with football was that it's outside, not inside. A second sport was girls volleyball, which is inside. But my analysis of the nature of volleyball versus basketball, which was the previous season, which we opted not to opt into. The two sports are a little different. It's actually a foul in volleyball if you physically touch someone. And an important prerequisite for any game to be played, and I've worked with Mr. Bramoff on this, is that all participants, both our players and the opponents have to be masked at all times, not only when they're on the bench, but when they're playing. So if we go up against a team that does not adhere to that rule, we will forfeit the game. Both of those sports, students will have to be tested regularly. And we know from experience that those tests, with regard to the basketball and wrestling season resulted in many Long Island teams having to shut down their season. Hopefully that's not the case with regard to volleyball and football. And, you know, we'll, we'll do our best, but with the test positive rate, the seven-day average in and around 4%, I think we're in a bit of a better position, significantly better position actually than we were about a month ago. Happy to entertain any questions or comments.
Board members, discussion?
My only question is, well, and first of all, I appreciate the update and the recommendation. And I think it's important, you know, that we have as much information as possible on the athletic part of our website, not just about what teams are being fielded and what the schedules are, but what the required protocols are for the district for each of those sports so that students and their parents understand what the conditions are. I think it's just helpful to have on our site and not just assume someone's going to go to section 11. Then the other thing, which is totally unrelated, but I understand that for indoor sports, that spectators aren't allowed to, to view them. So for volleyball as an example, spectators can't go watch. So we invested as a district a couple of years ago in a system with Huddle where games could be broadcast. So I, we, you know, we haven't had the discussion, but I'm, I'm assuming that, you know, we'll utilize that so at least parents and other spectators can remotely watch.
Yes, most definitely. And Mr. Bramoff has already been piloting. I'm not sure if it's through Huddle or just on his own, but he was live streaming the swimming meets, which didn't permit spectators as well. But Mr. Bramoff, if you're on the line, feel free to chime in.
Yes, the, the exact number for indoor sports is still up at debate at the county level. However, Mr. Nichols and I have made the decision that we will not be allowing spectators to the volleyball matches. However, we will live stream all varsity matches through Huddle as well as through, there's a YouTube portion of the Huddle account. All of our other matches will be live streamed and you can get a list of the live streaming services from each of the other schools, which will be posted on the section 11 website. But to act upon what Chris just mentioned, I do believe we will post those live links on our own district website.
Terrific. Thank you.
Any other questions about interscholastic or comments about interscholastic athletics?
Doesn't sound like it. Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, just one additional point. I will be coming to the Board of Education within the next week with a recommendation for middle school sports. Middle school sports are scheduled to begin March 22nd. And as has been our, the way we've been operating from the beginning, I'll try to make that decision as close to the 22nd as I can, looking at the conditions on the ground, some national benchmarks as well as local benchmarks. And if we think it's safe, we'll proceed forward with the recommendation to play boys and girls cross-country field hockey, football, boy soccer and tennis. But again, those recommendations will come sometime next week. The next item that I want to just provide a quick update on is the COVID testing. As the Board of Education knows, we contracted with Enzo Laboratories to offer PCR testing for students and staff in the learning center, the elementary school, the middle school, high school. The first day of testing was February 23rd. Prior to February 23rd, we had sent out three notices to Sag Harbor families providing instructions about how to register for the tests and encouraging them to do so. We ultimately tested 168 students and staff with no negative test results. And as per previous comments at other board meetings, the PCR test is certainly more accurate than the rapid test. So that's good news. Where we stand with regard to scheduling a next, next test date, my tentative thinking at this point, speaking with the other administrators and our nursing staff is that if the local test positive rates continue to remain pretty low, which they are right now relative to where they've been, we likely won't offer another test date prior to March slash April break. But if we see a spike, we would offer an additional date before the break, which I believe Saturday is March 27th. So we'll be monitoring local conditions and national conditions to see where we're at. Any questions about testing?
Board members?
What I want to thank the team that did it and it, you know, it's great news that no one tested positive. And I want to reinforce this was completely voluntary. There's been, I've seen some public discussion about why didn't more people do it? Or it's, it was voluntary and families had many reasons why they may have chosen not to have had their children tested through the school. But I applaud the effort and, and the results are very promising. They're encouraging.
And I just wanted to, you know, say thank you for also, thank you to everyone who organized it as well. And, you know, the report back was that, you know, as Mr. Nichols had said would be the case. It did not go up the nose. It was not painful. It was a tickle. So hopefully people will be more apt to participate next time if that was their concern. And also just want to caution people against thinking that just because we had no positive test results, that that is indicative of the larger population because it was not only voluntary, but it was to some extent, at least anecdotally, from what I can see, somewhat self-selected in terms of it seemed like people were more likely to test if they're also of the types that are taking really, really big precautions as home, at home as well. And, you know, I really, from like my kids would say, you know, because it was about 10% participation. So it's like, you knew which, which was the other kid in your class who, who got tested and you knew that everyone else didn't, right? And so it just seemed like, you know, the kids that are having the sleepovers and taking fewer precautions, those are the ones that I was hoping would get tested. And so I would encourage as many people to get tested as possible next time. So we have, you know, as broad of an array of our population as possible. Thanks.
Just, just one additional comment before I make my last point. And that is that the, really the setting up the day and the administration of the tests relied on three people, primarily Mr. Malone, Ms. Carriero and the elementary school nurse and all the nurses, Beth Kriegman and all the nurses, really played a pivotal role both in contacting Enzo and communicating with them prior to the test date, but then also setting up, setting up the test schedules for all three schools and even facilitating and helping on the test day itself. So thank you to all those people.
Can I ask one, I'm sorry, can I ask one related question? Because, because it's been chatter about percentage. How many, I mean, off the top of your head, can you, do you know, and I'm sorry, I'm asking, I might not meaning to put you on the spot. How many students and staff do we have actually going into the buildings and into the district versus operating remotely?
Some total, we have about between 12 and 1300 students and staff total. And then in terms of remote status, it's varied, but you have about maybe 25 to 30%. If I were to take an average over the last three or four months who are remote. So 70% coming in about, what is that, 750, 800? Whatever it is, yeah.
All right. So then we're looking at, what is that, a fifth of, you know, 22, 23% to add of, out of those that are in-person testing. Okay, thanks.
Yeah. So then the last point, and it sort of is similar to what Jordana said, although not entirely. That is that, you know, today, the head of the CDC, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, Dr. Rachel Walensky, I'll quote her, said, "Please hear me clearly. At this level of cases with variants spreading, we stand to completely lose the hard-earned ground we have earned." So her message to our country was that we've made significant progress, but that when you look at the data and the emergence of the new variants, there's credible fear that we could see a significant uptick in cases in the near to immediate future. So even if you look at the data, in the near to immediate future. So even if you look at the data, this past week's number of infections was up 2% nationwide versus the previous week. And the seven day average of COVID deaths, the previous week increased 2% over the previous week. That's nationwide. So when you look at the fact that there was a pretty precipitous drop that took place over several weeks, it's important not to ignore the fact that not only did we see it plateau, but we've seen it start to go back up. And the scientists who are the people we should be listening to are saying that we need to keep our guard up because the next, you know, few weeks to few months are critical as we ramp up vaccine distribution. At the same time, trying to keep the growth of the variant or the number of variant cases down. So the message to our community is we continue to need you to be thoughtful and, and safe and in communicating with your children. Uh, and how we can together keep those numbers down and people as safe as possible. So that is my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Appreciate it. Board members, questions?
Okay, let's move on, please, Jeff.
So we're on to the administrator's report. So I'm going to start with, uh, Mr. Malone at the elementary school with his principal's report to be followed by Ms. Carriero at the middle school, high school.
Thanks, Mr. Nichols. Good evening, everyone. Just like to actually use tonight's report to highlight our upcoming spring parent teacher conferences at the elementary school. We will, we have those scheduled for Thursday, March 25th and Friday, March 26th. These will be days that the students are dismissed early between 11 and 11:15 because we're still adhering to a staggered dismissal. And that early release provides teachers time to schedule remote conferences with their parents and family members to review student progress thus far. March 19th happens to be the close of our second trimester. So at the March 25th and 26th conferences, parents and teachers will not only review general progress, but can take a look closely at the second trimester report card. And, you know, hopefully set some goals for the remainder of the year. Parent, parents should by the early part of next week, receive invites from their children's teachers with regards to the Google meet appointments and we'll arrange all of those.
Thanks, Mr. Malone. Ms. Carriero?
Good evening, everyone. Again, um, just like Mr. Malone, we're going to have parent teacher conferences a little bit early at the middle high school. It's going to be the March 11th and 12th, a Thursday and Friday. It is right after our third quarter progress reports. We have it set up and we've already emailed out. It will be like speed dating again with those Google meets, seven minutes. We found actually that the parents and faculty found this very helpful because it was able to see more families and have more contact than when we are in the gymnasium due to just work and other such things. Today was a big day in the high school. We did a lot of surveying and a little, a lot of data collection and we have fully remote for 43% of our high school population is fully remote and the rest were all in person, five days a week. So that's big news on our part. Um, we're working with class sections and classroom capacity, which is our, pretty much our ceiling. To keep this going, we're going to try to do this month by month, depending on how many students want to come in person full time. And if we have to, we might have to go back to that hybrid learning model at any point, which we let our community know. Our high school play musical or spring production is on its way and planning. There will be an email sent out to those people participating. And we've moved back the date to early June to not conflict with AP and IB schedules as well as it's right before Regents exams as well. And then our middle school and high school, we've just been working on scheduling for next year and making sure our focus is the remediation of this gap year, not that our teachers aren't working hard and doing their best. But we understand this is not the best learning environment for all of our students. So we're using that in mind when doing scheduling for this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Next on the agenda, Brian is, uh, the business administrator.
Yep, Ms. Brescheming.
Hi. It's good to see everyone. I'm, I'm going to start sharing my screen and bringing up the presentation. Let's see.
Please do.
Okay. Okay. So tonight, we're going to go through revenue projections again. We're going to talk about our tax levy limit and the impact that it's going to have on our voters. We're going to review the elementary, secondary PPS budgets, which includes special ed, athletics, BOCs, transfers to other funds and debt service. So after tonight's meeting, we would have actually touched upon everything in the budget at least one time. And moving forward, we're going to just discuss changes that have been made based on additional information that comes in every day. And we're also fine tuning various areas. The next meeting, March 15th, we're going to be going back to salaries and benefits and discussing changes that have been made to that, to those budgets. So we started the process with, um, giving everyone a good overview of our fund balance and what kind of savings that we have right now. And then we started our salaries and benefits budget. We presented that on January 25th. And the last meeting, we talked about our operational budget. So we went through our transportation budget, technologies, facilities and district office and the business office. So this is just showing what the current budget is compared to our proposed budget. And since our last meeting, nothing has changed. Um, our tax levy limit is still 1.51% and we're still working with a budget to budget increase of only 1.22%. So we are developing a budget based on these limits and we're hoping that, um, we can go out on May 18th with a tax levy increase of 1.5%. And we are doing that while we are maintaining all programs and we are actually going to be making slight enhancements to some of the programs, which we'll discuss later on. Our revenues and other financing sources, this has not changed either since our last meeting. I explained to everyone that if you look at the slide, it looks as though we received this big increase in state aid, which we have not. What happened was for the current year, the district went and, and they took a very conservative approach and they budgeted 20% less in state aid. Because at the time, we were hearing from the state that, um, our state aid would be reduced. And it actually was reduced. A lot of our state aid payments for the current year were reduced. But fortunately, we, we did receive more information from the state just recently that all of our state aid is going to be restored, which will help us for the current year. And next year, we are budgeting what we're, what the executive budget proposal states that we are set to receive, which is really a flat, flat state aid right now. The only thing that may change, uh, once the state budget is approved around April 1st, we will receive another state aid projection then. And, um, once we receive the legislative state aid run, we'll make changes to the slide. And we'll see how, what kind of impact it will have overall. Most likely, if we receive more state aid, we may be able to decrease the appropriated fund balance that we're currently planning to use to fund next year's budget. So, uh, for the current school year, the district had to appropriate almost $1.6 million in fund balance because of that big state aid reduction. Next year, we're hoping to only have to appropriate $1 million. And that appropriated fund balance is really surplus funds from the current year that we use to carry forward to fund next year's program. The general funds tax levy you can see there is 1.5%. That's how we're building the budget. And our total budget on the bottom would be going up only 1.22% or $539,116 overall. So these are the factors that we use to determine our tax levy limit and how we came up with that 1.5%. If you look at the two main reasons why our tax levy limit is really so low this year, it's mainly because of our levy growth factor, which is you, by law, the lesser of 2% or the change in the rate of inflation. So, um, last year, the rate of inflation was only 1.23%. So we weren't anywhere even near the 2% um, limit on that. And, uh, this is the lowest levy growth factor we've had in seven years. So it is really affecting every district in the state right now. Another reason why our levy limit is so low is because of our capital tax levy exclusion. So if you look at for the current year, um, if you see capital tax levy for 2020, 2021 on the top, our exclusion was $1,971,966. Next year, our exclusion is actually going down to $1,690,674. So that decrease in our tax levy exclusion actually brings down our tax levy limit. And it's really not a bad thing because it, it, it shows that, uh, we are, our exclusion went down by 281,000. 230,000 of that is debt service. So we actually had $230,000 with the debt service falling off our books for next year. So it's always good to, um, actually have less money that we have to pay out in debt service each year. And then another portion of that decrease is made up of our transfer to capital. So on the bottom half of the slide, you'll see all of our exclusions listed. And you'll see what makes up that $1,690,674. And, um, that's net of any building aid, of course. But all of our debt services listed, our debt service exclusions are listed and our transfer to capital, which we've had, you, you've had in the budget for the past few years, there was a $50,000 transfer capital. That was for asbestos removal, um, just in case the district needed to have asbestos removed during the year or in any future years, that money was set aside in the capital fund for that. And then now, um, the law was just changed last year where we could exclude part of our BOCs capital costs. So we were able to exclude another $39,435 worth of tax levy to pay our BOCs capital exclusion. As I said, with our revenue slide, I don't see any changes being made from now till, uh, the budget vote to this. I don't see any factors changing. Um, the only thing that may change is our building aid. If our building aid does increase with the newest legislative aid runs, we would of course make the change on, on this slide. Uh, and this is really a summary of the previous slide. The tax cap submit had, our tax cap calculation had to be submitted to the state controller's office today. So on March 1st, all of those numbers are due to the controller's office. And then you can go into the system, the portal and make changes along the way up until the budget is adopted to any of these numbers. So for now, this is just a summary of what was reported to the state, um, earlier today. And you could see on the bottom, our difference between, um, going out with a 1.5% tax levy increase versus the 1.51% means we're under the cap by $3,603. And this is what the projected impact is. And I think depending on your view, some of it might be cut off on the side. Okay. So I just reduced all the, um, some of the Zoom video. But if you look at this, you'll see that a 1.5% tax levy increase really does have a very minimal impact on, um, will have a minimal impact on everyone's tax bill next year. On top of the slide, you'll see the town of Southampton. On the bottom is town of East Hampton. I got in touch with both towns just to see what the actual median assessed values are in both towns. And in town of Southampton, the, uh, median assessed value was $874,800. And this was non-waterfront properties. Waterfront properties, median assessed value was actually higher. Um, and in the town of East Hampton, if you look at the full value, um, you can see that the median full value in East Hampton was $905,172. So with a 1.5% tax levy increase, and if you apply that to the projected medians in both towns, you're looking at for the town of Southampton, an annual dollar increase in taxes of $58.57. And in the town of East Hampton, it would be slightly more, which is about $60.54 for the year. Now, the projection, of course, in, um, assumes that there's no changes in the assessed value of your home or the equalization rate, um, applied to the value of your home. So if everything stays constant, you will see a slight increase, um, for the year in your taxes with a 1.5% tax levy increase. And the monthly impact, of course, is, um, under $5 in most cases. I did project out using a median of $500,000 and a million dollars also, just so that taxpayers can kind of see where they fall within that range. And tonight, um, this is just a summary of all of the budgets that we're just gonna, we're just gonna review. Um, the board received all the detail on Friday. And with a 1.5% tax levy increase, there is not a lot of big changes that you'll see in any of these areas. Your 2021, 2022 proposed budget is actually going down in these areas by 258,000. And really most of that reduction is just because of the debt service. So with all the debt service coming off the books and also that transfer to capital on the bottom of the slide decreasing that $50,000, that's what's really making up that huge decrease of 258,843. Because most of the other areas in the budget are staying flat. And, um, there really weren't any reductions made to anybody, anyone's budget. Everyone was able to, um, prepare their budget and live within the, the increase of 1.22% for the total budget. Now, none of these costs, of course, include salaries. We reviewed the salary budget back in January. And as I said, we'll review salaries again during the next meeting. So there were definitely changes made to salaries. I originally reported, well, we were planning on salaries staying flat and, um, that has changed. So we'll go through some of the increases in salaries for the next meeting. So all of these costs include equipment, materials and supplies and contractual costs. And then we also have BOCs, which is on the bottom line. And you'll see that our BOCs budget is also decreasing. So let's go through the, um, the elementary and the secondary proposed budget changes. Now, this is just their account codes that show changes, increases and decreases. Much of their budget, if you see a proposed budget of $406,000, their budget combined is actually $799,691. But they had half of the budget account codes weren't changing at all. And there were no, there was no dollar change or no percent change. So this is just a summary of any account codes that are going up or are going down. We will talk about some of the increases and decreases right now. And also, if you do look at the last two columns, you'll see what our expenditures are to date for the current year. And you'll also see what the expenditures were in 2019, 20, which really do reflect, um, schools closing in March. So a lot of the budget did remain unspent just, um, in 1920. So if you look at some of the increases and decreases, you'll see that, um, the increase in contractual costs, which are basically on the top half of the slide, the 4,640, the 4,450, the 7,175, most of those increases are offset by decreases in the supply codes, which are on the bottom. So really the budget was just shifted over based on what the needs of the department were. The increase of, let's see, I've got $7,883 overall has really been made up of, uh, regular school equipment, PE at the high school. The administrators did, didn't need additional funds in that budget. So you'll see for the current year, that budget was only $360. And for next year, uh, there is some equipment that needs to be replaced and new equipment needs to be purchased. So that budget did go up by 5,000. And then the balance of that $7,883 increase really, you'll see there is a, an increase of $4,200 in the summer school line. So it's a summer school materials and supplies district wide, $4,200. What that is, is that's a new item that you're going to see in this year's budget. So for the summer program, we've run an extended, uh, 12-month program for students who have IEPs. But we also have other students attend the summer school program who need additional support in math and reading. And that program is, um, a slightly shorter program. It's a four-day program versus the extended school year program. So in the past, both programs were accounted for. So in the past, both programs were accounted for in the special aid fund. And the special aid fund is where you are supposed to account for the mandated program. Because most of that program is supported by state aid. And the district has a transfer to special aid, which I'm gonna go into on. It's actually the last, it's one of the last slides. So if you see, um, there is a transfer to special aid fund right here. And um, this transfer to special aid fund is really the general funds portion of their of of what they're left over to pay for that. Um, mandated program. So in the past, you can see that we budgeted, um. Just if you look at nineteen twenty, I believe the budget originally was fifty five. Okay, so for nineteen twenty, the district budgeted fifty five thousand, but the transfer to special aid fund was a hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and seventy two dollars. For eighteen nineteen, which is on here, the but the the district budgeted fifty thousand as a transfer to special aid. But the actual amount transferred to special aid was a hundred and fourteen thousand, four sixty three. So the district was actually transferring more money to pay for the additional program that was accounted for in the special aid fund. So in order to make the accounting of this program more transparent. We're actually gonna bring those costs over into the general fund. So the special aid fund budget will stay relatively flat. And instead of sixty seven thousand being budgeted, we're just increasing that to seventy thousand. And then really, the difference in what was budgeted and the difference in what was actually spent during those years. Is going to now be included in the general fund budget in that twenty three thirty account code. Um, so you'll see forty two hundred dollars of the program cost is now gonna be included for materials and supplies here. The only other cost that we have for the program is going to be um, salaries. And um, based on hourly rates for whatever teachers are working the program. Um, and you'll see those increases in the salary component of the budget at the next meeting. In total, uh, the projection for that program right now is thirty eight thousand, three hundred. Which is kind of in line with what the district has been transferring over to the special aid fund. In addition to what was really budgeted for the mandated program. So um, I know this might be a little confusing because there's a lot of information. So if anyone wants me to stop here and answer any questions, I can. Um, if not, I'll I'll move on and um, we can answer some questions later on too. So.
I have a bunch of questions, but I'll wait to the end.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so the next budget we're gonna review is the PPS budget, which includes all of our special specialized costs. Um, and this is the same thing. I included a slide with only the budget changes. So the budget itself is much larger. It's not much larger, but it's a little larger than the one point two eight two million. And um, I don't, but of many of the line items in the budget have no increases and no changes at all. So for the PPS budget, you'll see that a lot of the budget itself, the budget itself is only increasing by seventeen thousand, one hundred and twenty three dollars overall. It's a very small increase. That increase of one point three is actually even lower when you take into account all the other line items that stayed the same. It's really like maybe a one point two percent increase. Um, most of it, most of the costs of the budget, a lot of them were just reallocated. So um, originally, they were budgeted for a district wide code and now they're being broken out into the learning center, the elementary school, the middle school, the high school. So you'll see that a lot of the costs are just shifting from one account code to another. Um, and then we'll talk about what really makes up that seventeen thousand dollar increase. But on the top, you'll see stu- uh, students with disabilities contractual district wide is going down by fifty thousand. So the budget for the current year is hundred and twenty two thousand, nine hundred. It's going down to seventy two thousand, nine hundred next year. Well, that fifty thousand is really going down into um. The middle of the slide, when you look at all the assistive technology budget. The assistive technology budget is actually increasing by the fifty thousand. So if you add up the forty five, the fifteen hundred, twelve fifty, the two thousand and two fifty. That's really the fifty thousand. So that's pretty much a wash, just moving funds from one budget to another. Um, the two hundred and ninety nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollar increase is just being reallocated. So if you add the fifteen thousand, one twenty, seventy five and ninety increase, that makes up that two hundred and ninety nine thousand. This two hundred and fifty five thousand dollar tuition decrease is now being broken out into the middle school and high school line items. So uh, and you'll see that's a little bit of an increase, a fifteen thousand dollar increase. So most of this seventeen thousand dollar increase on the bottom here, as a grand total, um, fifteen thousand of that is really an increase for um, needed tuition. To uh, to to other districts. And that is broken out, like I said, for middle school and high school. Um, and then. There we, there were some slight increases also in uh, supplies you'll see on the bottom and some conference and PD costs. But the majority of that seventeen thousand is really for for tuition. And then we have the athletics budget, the proposed budget for athletics. And that is going up slightly. So we we're showing an increase right now of twenty three thousand dollars. And that is being driven by equipment needs. So um, I think the equipment budget was slashed for the current school year and there is some um. Replacement and we need to purchase some additional cardio weightlifting equipment. And uh, there was also um, the need for a solar scoreboard. And then also the replacement of some of the backstops at the at the learning center. Um, these estimates for these items were actually very old and there, I think they are maybe a couple of years old now. So within this increase, um, this equipment increase, we'll have to see exactly what we could actually get done. But all, everything else in the budget is um, pretty much remaining flat. And this is actually the whole budget. This isn't just showing the changes. And then we have our BOSI's proposed budget. So we really do um, get a lot of services through BOSI's. And it is a great way for us to share services and share the costs with all the other um, component districts that are part of the Eastern Suffolk BOSI's consortium. And we, and and services we get are financial services, purchasing services, software, testing. I mean, it's special uh, students with disabilities, special ed services. So we, our current budget right now is one million, three hundred and fifty four thousand, six hundred and sixty five dollars. We're actually um, projecting to bring that down a little bit. And um, if you look at what our expenditures were even for nineteen twenty. And we looked at each coaster for each line item, we felt that the reduction was, we would be fine and we could live within um, that reduction. And we also get a lot, we also get state aid. We don't get a lot of state aid, but we do get state aid based on what we spend. So um, just in the nineteen twenty school year, we received uh, some of that at that one point two six three million. We received about two hundred and ten thousand of that back in state aid. And um, we are slated to receive um, at least that for the current year. And for next year, we're also projected to receive um, at least hundred eighty six thousand back for next year. So we are monitoring this budget and um, most of the coasters and service costs, we did receive the increases from BOSI's. And BOSI's did keep most of those increases in services to be less than two percent. Um, but anything that we did not receive a cost for that we had to just estimate, we did estimate a two percent increase. But some of these, and some of these costs are just set in stone and they're not, they're not gonna change moving forward.
Great.
And then this is our debt service and transfer to other funds. So this is what I talked about a little bit earlier with the transfer to special aid fund in the middle of the slide. Which really does support our summer school program. Um, our transfer to school lunch fund um, is not gonna change. We're gonna keep that at a hundred and thirty thousand. Our transfer to debt service, you'll see is decreasing. So that's eighty one thousand dollars right there, a decrease to our debt service fund. Because we're just, as I said, we paid off a lot of our debt. And on this whole top of the slide, you'll see all of the debt service numbers going down. So we no longer have a bond anticipation note. So we're not paying any more principal and interest on a bond anticipation note. All of those were rolled over into a bond. And um, our tan interest has been uh, very hard to predict. So interest rates for our tan has um, fluctuated greatly. And right now, if you look at, if you look at what we spent last year in tan interest. We spent two hundred, over two hundred and fifty three thousand dollars interest on our tan. So we get a fifteen million dollar borrowing on tax anticipation note. Because even though our school year runs from July to June thirtieth. We don't receive our real property tax money, which is, you know, eighty nine, ninety percent of our funding until the end of December, um, you know, January. So we have to actually borrow um, in anticipation of receiving those taxes every year, which is definitely a huge, an additional cost for us, just because of timing. Um, so if you look at for nineteen twenty, our tax anticipation note borrowing fifteen million dollars at a two point two five percent interest rate. That interest cost us two hundred and fifty three thousand, one hundred and twenty five dollars. Now, just one year later, and we budgeted for the current year, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And in the current year, we actually only had to borrow thirteen million dollars, but our interest rate was only one point five percent. So our current year um, tax anticipation note interest is only gonna be a hundred and twenty thousand, two, not only, but it's gonna be a a vast reduction, a hundred and twenty thousand, two fifty. Compared to the two hundred and fifty thousand we paid the year before. So next year, um, we're proposing to bring that down by thirty thousand dollars. So even though this year was, you know, a lot less than than last year, we don't feel comfortable reducing it quite yet. Because we just don't know what's gonna happen with interest rates. So we're gonna, we're gonna shave thirty thousand off of that, but we'll still have in the budget two hundred and fifty thousand, just to cover, to cover that borrowing. So um, in total, that decrease in the overall budget you saw on the first slide, it's really, all of that decrease is really made up on this slide. It's really just debt service being paid off and no longer having a transfer to capital. And then um, we spoke to our attorneys and we did get some language for our legal notice, which will be adopted at the next meeting. And the legal notice will have on there our propositions and proposition one is of course to approve the school budget. Uh, proposition two is the creation of a capital reserve fund, but it's not a brand new fund. We already have a capital reserve fund. Our current capital reserve fund has just, um, it it's already met its useful life. So our current capital reserve fund was set up as a ten year reserve. And um, we are, May twenty twenty one will be, will be at the expiration of that capital reserve. So we can no longer use the money in that capital reserve. We have to take the current funds in that reserve and roll it into a new capital reserve that the voters must approve. Um, the capital reserve fund can pretty much be used for any type of um, capital purchase that we would have to go out and borrow funds for, any future capital projects, improvements. Um, it just wouldn't pay for any type of repair items. And of course, the voters would have to approve any um, money that was expended from the capital reserve. We just couldn't say, we're gonna do this three million dollar project and we'll just use capital reserve funds. Now, the board, the the voters actually have to approve every single dollar that is spent from the capital reserve fund. But for now, they're just voting to create a new one so that we can roll our old one into into the new one. And it would have absolutely no impact on the tax levy or the budget um, for next year. And proposition three is for the purchase of a bus that we need to replace. That money would come directly out of our fleet replacement reserve. So that all will also have no effect on the tax levy and no effect on the budget. Um, on tonight's agenda, you'll actually see a SECR resolution that we have to approve before we approve the legal notice at the next meeting. Um, it's just saying that this purchase of this bus, proposed purchase doesn't have any sort of environmental impact. So we don't have to do any, anything further uh, related to SECR. So at the next meeting, um, at March fifteenth, like I said, we we've now presented the full budget. But we're going to review the entire budget again and talk about changes. And we'll also talk about if there's any changes to the revenue projections. April twelfth, we have a meeting scheduled, um, and we'll discuss revenue projections. By then, we'll have the new state aid runs. So we'll definitely, we definitely may have changes to those revenue projections for the April twelfth meeting. And we're gonna review the entire budget again. Um, right now, the board is scheduled to adopt the budget on April twentieth. And we'll have a budget hearing on May tenth. And of course, the um, the statewide budget vote is ma- scheduled for May eighteen. So do we have any questions?
Board members, are there any questions? Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Chris, I believe you had some questions first.
I do, which I actually could, it's probably, you probably already answered. So it's just really to get clarification. First of all, thank you once again. I think this is really helpful and you put together another great document on the budget. So I really appreciate it very much.
You're welcome.
When I was looking at, um, I think you answered it, but I just want to confirm, I understand. When I was looking at it, besides comparing last year's budget to this year's proposed budget or next year's proposed budget to our current budget. The only um, expenditures we could really could reference that were a full school year were twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. And on some of these, it was a huge disparity between what was actual from two years or a year and a half ago, two years ago to what we're posting for next year. Is that basically just all the codes being different? Because some of them was pretty, some was pretty significant. For instance, on um, page eight. If, you know, the actual, the actual um, in two thousand nineteen, twenty was two hundred and thirty, almost two hundred and thirty eight thousand. And now the new budget's for four hundred and six thousand. So that difference is a seventy one percent increase. In just two school years, based on what we, what the actuals were posed. Are most of that that I see throughout here just because things are coded differently?
Yes. So a lot of it is because things are coded differently. So if the codes, um, the codes would have been developed for the current year. And if there was no um, change from the current year code to next year's code, I didn't include it in this slide. But that doesn't mean that there might have been um, items that were coded into a different account code for nineteen twenty. So the only, the, so if I really go ahead and probably show you the um, the full slide, you'll definitely see that there was more spending. But because of the shortened school year, there really was um, a lot of, a lot of the budget that that remained unspent in the. Because remember, this is just equipment, material, supplies and contractual costs. This is not salaries and benefits. So see, your salaries and benefits were still paid out for the full school year. But a lot of the um, other budget lines were not spent just because of COVID and because of the shutdown in March. And that is why at the end of the year, the district did have monies left over. And the district was able to put more money into the capital reserve and to other reserve funds. Um, and also allocate money to fund this year's budget. So a lot of that surplus that you had in nineteen twenty went to funding that one million, um, six hundred and ninety one. You know, that one million, five hundred and ninety one thousand dollar appropriated fund balance. Because the year before, you didn't appropriate any fund balance. So that was a huge hit. So a lot of the money that was unspent in nineteen twenty went to supporting the twenty twenty one budget. And it's part of that one million, five hundred and ninety one thousand dollars.
Great. So then the, the, thank you for that. So then the disparity between the two, some of it is that we didn't spend because of the COVID shutdown and some was just different codes. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other board questions for Ms. Buschimmy? I think, I think it was great, Jennifer. Thank you. And just for the public, we receive these documents prior to the presentation from Jennifer. So if there are questions, we're able to raise them prior to the presentation. So just, we're not seeing these for the first time, just so everybody knows that we've reviewed them prior to coming to the meeting. Um, great. Thank you so much. So if there's no other board questions, we would move on to section eight of our agenda, the consent agenda. Is there a motion for consent agenda items eight point two through eight point sixteen?
Some of.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? No discussion. Okay, great. Uh, just give.
I'm sorry, I have a quick question. Um, is there no varsity softball head coach? For spring coaches underneath eighteen points, it's missing.
Mr. Bramoff, do you want to answer that?
Uh, yeah. Uh, I'm sorry, Jeff. I don't have the agenda in front of me at this time. Uh, was the varsity softball coach the only spring coach that was not, uh, the only spring coach that was not appointed?
That's what it, it appears to be the case. Yes.
Okay, then that was probably an omission uh, on my behalf, if if that's the case.
All right. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll follow up uh, at the next meeting. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Great.
I will look into it tonight. Thank you.
Great. Any other board questions? I'm sorry, discussion from the board.
I would just request, once we vote, if it, if it passes, that um, there could be just a very brief discussion about the the uh, individual who is being appointed to the um. Uh, the middle school system principal.
Do you want to have a discussion after the vote?
Well, I I I don't need to hear about it to vote, but I think the pub, it might be nice for the public to hear about someone who's recently appointed to an administrative position.
Uh, Jeff, so why don't we, before we vote, if you would like to just uh, update the public and the board on this uh, individual that's proposed or. Or in light of that, wait, I withdraw that, let's see where, let's close the discussion, let's vote and then we'll hear from Mr. Nichols.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Mary, if you could open the voting, please.
I haven't gotten Brian's or Jordan's.
Mine has not popped up, but I vote aye.
Okay. Okay, that's unanimous.
Great, thank you so much. Jeff, if you could just, for purpose of the public, I think as a wise suggestion from Chris regarding item eight point eleven, Ms. Rodriguez Mora. Congratulations, Ms. Mora, Ms. Rodriguez Mora.
Congratulations Veronica. As the board knows, we advertised for a middle school assistant principal position to start in August of two thousand twenty one. Thankfully, this year, Ms. Westhoff, who is a middle school math teacher, has stepped in and done a wonderful job. But she's still passionate about the classroom and is scheduled to return to that role. So knowing that, we advertised for the position. And there was an interview committee comprised of Ms. Cariero, Mr. Guinan, Ms. Westhoff and a faculty member. And they interviewed a number of candidates and the unanimous selection was Ms. Rodriguez Mora. Her background is that she taught in New York City at a very prestigious middle school, public school. She's a graduate of NYU undergrad with honors. She was a Goldman Sachs fellow for graduate school. And thankfully, she's worked this past year at Pearson as a teacher. So we've been able to see the great work that she does with our students and her fellow faculty members day in and day out. She's bilingual, which will be a great asset to our community, especially our Latino community in terms of communication. And so I'm thrilled that she's going to be joining our administrative staff. And I'm, I'm really excited about what she's going to bring to our, to our administrative team. So welcome Veronica.
Thank you very much. Just wanted to say good evening to everyone and it brings me great joy to continue to serve the Pearson Middle School community. Thank you for this tremendous opportunity to fulfill the role of middle school assistant principal. I'm very excited to contribute to your collective efforts in supporting the SAG Harbor learning community and I'm really looking forward to working with you all.
Thank you very much for being here, we appreciate you wanting to be here and work with us and we're looking forward to it. Great. Okay, so with that, we are now on to section ten, committee reports, if any, or they can be tabled to the next meeting if there's not an update. First, ten point one, if anyone would like to share an update regarding the communications committee.
So would you like to provide an update?
We, we could, we could wait till the next meeting, it's totally up to you.
I, I was asked, Sandy and Scott both co-chair and Sandy did ask me to bring something up if she had to hop off the phone. Which is, well, first of all, I just want to thank the participants, they've been active and there's been a lot of discussion. We're continuing to refine the surveys that we, that will then continue to be reviewed and then go to the administrators and the board. But one of the things that is going to be teed up or requesting that there's some time at the next board meeting for a committee presentation on is to request that for next year's budget included is a communication specialist related position. And this was something that was brought to the board by the previous superintendent. We had some discussions and and there was a positive feeling about moving forward, but it never really got into the budget cycle. So the current committee has evaluated that, is still working through some job descriptions and confirming what the other surrounding districts do. But we anticipate coming to the board and ask, we're requesting now to get on the agenda to come to the board at the next meeting to formally present a position for our next calendar school year.
Thank you, Chris, and I will make sure that that is an item on our next agenda for that presentation.
Is there anything you want to add?
No, you did a terrific job, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you guys, we'll make sure that that makes it to the agenda for purposes of that presentation. And ten point two, the educational facilities committee. I was unable to do the scheduling to make the last meeting, Paul, is there an update? If not, we can table it to the next meeting.
No, I have a nice update for you.
Great, thank you.
Evening, everybody. The facilities committee have met actually several times over the last month or so. And we've been discussing the status of the final year of the current five year plan. We also have started discussing what the future repairs are needed with help from our district architects. These discussions will be used to generate a future five year plan that we're working on right now. And then later on, we will bring this to the board for discussions.
Thank you. I think it's important for everyone though that we did have a five year plan that we've, pretty much, I believe, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, satisfied everything or came close to everything on that five year plan for for district wide. And that the, what Paul is speaking of, this is for the public's edification, that we'll be updating that to a new five year plan as to what we can look forward to in terms of tackling and improving the facilities over the next five years.
There's a few, there's a few outstanding things on the old five year plan that I'm in a process of finishing up on. So we're getting some railings installed and some tile worked on and whatever little things fell through the cracks, we're taking care of those things now.
Great, thank you so much. Item ten point three, policy committee, if there is a policy update, or we could carry this over to the next meeting.
Yes, thank you, good evening, just a brief update. Thank you, Bullard Policy Committee met last on February eleventh and will meet again on March eleventh. Work continues on the draft policy manual. And policy number thirty four twenty regarding non discrimination and anti harassment in the district was brought forward for review and discussion, initial discussion. There was a lot of good discussion around that, some proposed edits. But the committee felt the policy needed more attention and also additional review by district coordinators of Title Nine and DASSA. And they've also been invited to our next mini meeting to contribute to further discussion on thirty four twenty. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mears, appreciate it. Okay, no items of old business, we are on to section thirteen, public input. Number two, if there's anyone from the public that would like to make a statement, comment or ask a question on anything on tonight's agenda or for a future agenda, now would be the time to raise your hand or put something into the chat box. Scott, are there any hands?
There is one, Kevin Martin.
Great, Mr. Martin.
Yes, I, I spoke with Jeff and Paul a while back about the gym floor. The condition of the gymnasium in the high school is absolutely horrible. And that whole building needs renovation. I'm just wondering whatever happened with that.
Mr. Nichols or Mr. Wilkin?
I'll, I'll speak on that. You're right, the the gymnasium needs repairs, the floor is at the end of its life cycle. But we're, part of the five year plan that we're currently discussing with the architects is either to put a band-aid on it and just fix the floor for now, or do we want to go bigger and you know, and really renovate the whole gymnasium area with, along with the locker rooms that are in poor shape and the weight room and, you know, the whole facilities in general. So this is a discussion that we're going to have to discuss in the near future, what, what is our big plan, what do we want to do? Do we want to just band-aid it or do we want to maybe renovate the whole area?
Am I still on?
You are.
Okay, the, the floor is too far gone for a band-aid, it's been shot for years now. If you sink money into trying to patch it and fix it, you're just throwing money out the window to waste. It needs to be done, it needs to be redone, the whole gymnasium, the locker rooms, they're horrible. You could ask Eric, he'll, I'm sure if he's still online, he can contribute to this and I wish he would. If he's online, I'd like Eric to add his input on this.
Well, we, we'll ask him for input, but Mr. Martin, what happens is the facility, the facilities committee with their architects and engineers are reviewing that with the guidance of the administration. And then recommendations will come to the board on that and they will include input from Mr. Bramoff in that, in that review and that plan. But your comments have been echoed by other members of the public as, as to that and what some perceive to be the desire to renovate that area.
Yeah, I just don't want to see them throwing money away trying to fix something that really can't be fixed.
We, that's why we need the professionals to weigh in on that.
Very good, thank you.
Very good. Any other hands, Mr. Fisher?
Do not stand, no.
Great. All right.
Yes.
Before we, before we wrap this up, something just occurred to me and I'm not trying to put the district clerk on the spot if she doesn't have these dates, but it just you know, we have not only the, the school budget vote in May, we will also have school board elections in May, I think. Last year it was delayed, it was postponed, we weren't on the regular cycle. But I believe this year it's going to be at this, you know, in in May on the usual cycle. So I just think it'd be, it's important to let the community know what those key dates are and if they're not on the school website to also have them on the school website so people know when the petitions are due. They do sometime, they do sometime in April, but I just, I want to make sure that we're, you know, we're getting ahead of that.
For candidates who are interested in running on the school board, the candidate petitions will be available March nineteenth. They'll be due April nineteenth, April twentieth, the picking of the names will be done and the ballot will be done. And we should be having a budget vote like it was in two thousand nineteen.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you, Mary, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, with that, hearing no other board members of business, I'd entertain a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mary, I don't know, it's not popping up on my laptop, but I vote aye.
It's coming, here it is.
Oh, sorry.
It's a little slow. Hey, I'm going to put a bubble in for you, Brian.
Yep, it didn't come up over here, but I voted aye to close the meeting.
That's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
You too.
Congratulations Veronica.
Thank you, have a great evening, everyone.
Take care.
Thank you.